Good afternoon. I am going to call to order the regular meetings of the Committee of the Whole and the Race Equity Subcommittee for Wednesday, May 23rd. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair of the Committees. And with me at the dais are Councilmembers Johnson, Goodman, Ellison, Warsami, Schrader, President Bender, Councilmember Palmasano, Fletcher, Reich, Cunningham. I do want to note that we may be joined later by Councilmember Gordon, who had a family emergency that he needed to deal with today. So let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. And we have one item on our Race Equity Subcommittee agenda today, which will be heard before the Joint Committee meeting with the Enterprise Committee. And before we hear that presentation, I will ask the Enterprise Committee's Chair, Councilmember Palmasano, to call that meeting to order.
Thank you. I will also call the joint meeting of the Enterprise Committee meeting to order for Wednesday, May 23rd. Please let the record reflect that we have a quorum and that committee is represented here today by Councilmembers Reich, Fletcher, Warsami, and Goodman. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano. And we will now move forward with item number one, an update from the city's innovation team on their work to address racial equity. Welcome, Mr. Smith, Brian Smith.
Chair Jenkins. Committee members, good afternoon. My name is Brian Smith. I'm the Director of the City of Minneapolis Innovation Team. Been here since January of 2016. Today, I will talk to you about the work that we've been doing over the last couple of years and a few things that we will be working on going into the future. So, let's start with... So, the innovation team was brought to the City of Minneapolis in 2015 through a Bloomberg grant. And the purpose of the Bloomberg Innovation Team grants is Bloomberg feels that cities are uniquely positioned to meet the challenges of residents in their city. And he wanted to put resources and a team with a specific set of skills in those cities to address those challenges. We are currently... Innovation teams are currently in 30 cities across the U.S., and they're expanding every year. And one of the examples is Los Angeles are currently like some of the things that innovation teams do. Los Angeles is currently working on recruiting police to a police force that there's a lot of attrition, a lot of people retiring. And what they want to do is make sure that the communities that are underrepresented on their police force, they put a lot of effort into recruiting people of color to be the next generation of police officers. And so they're working closely with the Police Department and the community to fill those gaps and the future gaps with people of color on their police force. And they're hoping that that will also bridge a gap in police-community relations. And you also have the City of New Orleans, who had a horrific murder rate years ago. And they used their... One of the examples that they did with their innovation team was use their innovation team to help solve for what was the problem, what was the real issue, and what they were solving for around getting their murder rate under control. And so they used that as one example, what they used their innovation team for. And then the City of Syracuse, they used their...
Excuse me, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Can you identify what the issue that they identified, that innovation team, or do you know?
The...
Do you know what issue they identified as the...
Oh!
...cause for the high murder rate?
It was Chair Jenkins, it was committee members. It was the... I don't want to say typical, but in some ways, some of the responses were typical. It was about education, joblessness, resources in communities where the rates were high. And what they did was they convinced the city to actually use the resources that they had to address each one of those issues and then track with their community partners and city partners what was going on and holding people accountable to certain metrics that they had set about how they would spend their money, where they would put the resources. And then they saw a dramatic decrease in their murder rate throughout their city. Still not perfect, but they're doing significant work.
Thank you.
And then the City of Syracuse is another example. The City of Syracuse, they work on infrastructure problems. So, one of the things that they focused on was improving the modernization of their water systems and infrastructure. So, they use their innovation team to work with their Public Works and others to... They use tech solutions to figure out their water use, where it was being used, where it was not being used, where there was waste and things like that. And so they use tech solutions to come up with their... I mean, to solve some of the problems for their modernization, their water saving in their city. And it's a lot easier when there's like call and response because the last thing I want to do is feel like I'm talking at you. So, now we're going to go to defining innovation. Typically, what we have people do is, if you use the Webster's definition of innovation, is people just think something new, something creative. And we typically think of a thing when we define innovation. But the way the innovation team in Minneapolis defines innovation is a systematic process for identifying problems that matter, designing and implementing solutions that deliver meaningful outcomes. And so, it's important to note that innovation is not an invention. It may require that we invent some things, but it also requires a deep, deep understanding of human needs and the ability to deliver solutions to those needs within a given context. And that's what the innovation team here uses as our definition of innovation. And we know that innovation can manifest in many different forms. It can encompass new products, new services, new systems, new policies, and new ways of engaging with residents. No matter what form it takes, it's imperative not to confuse process for outcomes. And we're outcome-driven. So, how does innovation team work? Part of how that innovation team works. Or why we're here? We always ask the question, "Why?" And we're here because the "why" is we create outcomes that improve the lives of residents of the City of Minneapolis. Again, Bloomberg said that cities are uniquely positioned to do things for the residents in their city. And so, the "why," the "why" we exist, the "why" we come here every day, why we do what we do, is to improve the lives and the quality of life with regard to the services that the city provides to the residents of Minneapolis. Next thing is the "how." The "how" is we use a systematic process for engaging residents, stakeholders, and stakeholders to determine their needs, framing problems, developing ideas that create change, and testing those ideas to validate impact. Most important part of that statement is validating impact. Because whatever we do, we want to make sure that it has the impact, desired impact, that the city and the residents are looking for with improving the quality of service that we provide. And then lastly, the "what." The "what," again, is new policies, practices, and products that create impact for the residents of Minneapolis. And we always, again, it's important to know that we always anchor our work in the "why." And when councilmembers or department heads or the mayor, anybody wants to ask, you know, what we're really about, the "why" should always be at the center of it. And that's about the quality of services that we provide residents in Minneapolis. What makes us unique? The people that we work with around the city will say a lot of things make us unique. We're a very interesting team with a bunch of interesting personalities, but they all mix well. But policymakers should be aware that the process we use and what we bring is very ambitious, it's rigorous, resident-centered, and impact-driven. And we have a skill set, in my estimation, we have a skill set that allows for capacity and resources to address challenges that the city have, but have no clear set of solutions, and that the city can impact through its own levers. So what we do is, because of our skill set, we can take a big challenge like housing, we can take a big challenge like entrepreneurship, and use our skill set to break that down into workable, bite-sized chunks, so that we can really address the issues that the city wants to work on, as opposed to saying, "We want to work on business development," and not breaking it down and saying, "Oh, let's just invest $20 million in business development," without really figuring out what levers the city actually has that it controls, getting it down to bite-sized work. And then keep going through the process to make sure that we're actually solving for the right thing, as opposed to just being super-linear, so we keep checking ourselves through our process. The City of... I'm sorry. The innovation team is also an internal consultancy. When the Enterprise thinks of innovation, they should think of us as an internal consultancy with the skills and tools of a private... of the private sector, but with the domain knowledge and relationships of the civic sector. And so, we, as a team, bring a lot of the skill sets that cities try to borrow or get people from private sector and all they say, "Jeez, it's just, we can't compete with the private sector with this skill set. We can't pay them, but the private sector pays them." You actually have an internal consultancy right now with Innovation Team, who brings that skill set. But we have all the knowledge and relationships with you, department heads, and stakeholders on the outside, to bring those skills together to innovate for the City of Minneapolis. We're also, as a team, work cross-departmental. So rarely do we have an issue in our city that we're asked to solve for that it just stays in one department. So if you want to solve for housing, you have to work with cross-departmental folks. You have to deal with health, you have to deal with reg services, in most cases, you also have to bring in public safety. And so, as a group, we are able to, once we're given an issue to solve, we're able to manage those relationships cross-departmental. And we act as the cross-departmental analysts, designers, project managers, and innovators, so that... And we understand that folks that work in all these departments, when we're faced with issues, big pressing issues, they still have a job to do every day, as well as being asked to manage something else that's huge. But they can lean on us. We work with them, we can do a lot of the heavy lifting, a lot of that project management analytics and things, and project management, and actually provide them a service until we develop something, until we co-create something, that they can then institutionalize. But while we're doing that heavy lifting with them and for them, they can still carry out their day-to-day duties without having to worry about that balance of, "Do I sacrifice what I have to do every day to work on this new thing? And work on that new thing, and then all of a sudden, things aren't going as well as they should be in my day-to-day work?" But they don't have to worry about that with the Innovation Team. We can take on that heavy lifting, we can project manage, we can do all that work with them internally and externally. So that when it's... The new idea is bait, whether it's a policy, a practice, a program, a tool, they can implement it, but their work hasn't suffered because they have us to lean on to get it done.
Question, Mr. Smith. So, do departments reach out to you, or do you offer your services? How does that process work?
Chair Jenkins, committee members, we've had both and. We've had departments reach out to us, and there'll be an example of that later on in the presentation. We've had departments reach out to us. But we've also had our priority areas have been determined by the Coordinator's Office in conjunction with the mayor, not the current mayor at this point, but in conjunction with the mayor. So that's how we ended up with the priority areas that we've worked on thus far. And then, and you'll be able to hear more about those priority areas as we go forward. As part of the Innovation Team's process and as an internal consultancy, the following are services that we provide, a suite of services that the Innovation Team provides. We're able to provide research and discovery, community engagement, concept generation and validation, solution development, implementation planning, and support. And there's examples of each one of those in the PowerPoint, but if you have specific questions, I can answer those too about each one of those areas. And some of the examples would be data analysis, when we did a quantitative analysis of household wealth among households of color, in-depth interviews with over 100 small business owners and external business support organizations as a part of our minority and immigrant business development work. We convened over 40 community stakeholders along with departmental staff to gather information and synthesize key themes so that we could prioritize our work. And we also did rapid prototyping to develop our business portal, which some of you are aware of, and we will have examples of that in the presentation as we move forward as This is... This describes our process. Our process is not linear, although at times it may seem like you're going in a direction. But the reason why you have the circle here is because we move forward in a linear process, but we know that it's important that you never feel like you've arrived without really investigating where you arrived to figure out, is this really what we're solving for? Ask really important questions, dig into it to make sure that what we think is a solution is something that the city actually has purview and influence in, so that whatever we develop and wherever we go, it's something that the city can actually do something about. Then, the process is always continuous, it's iterative, and we get deeper insights the further and further that we go along in our work. Now, what you'll get is clear examples, what I'm going to go into now, is clear examples of how, when we go through our challenge... So if you came to us and said, "Hmm, rental housing," then what we do is we go through that same rigorous process, resident-centered, impact-driven, and then we apply our process and services to these challenges, and we help the city identify opportunities to implement solutions that will have impact. And so, the next slide here is an example of that. So, the big challenge we had was rental housing. How do you just solve for rental housing? That's a big piece of work. And so, what we did was we used our process, and what came out of that was the work that we did with 3-1-1 to increase rental reporting of housing violations and adding language dial options to 3-1-1. So, this is an example of how we worked cross-departmental. We worked with 3-1-1 Communications, NCR, community members, and folks from Reg Services were involved as well about coming up with a solution so that people could call in, say what was going on with their properties, and be able to report it. And then we found out in that work also, that language line was important. And so, 3-1-1 was able to work with us and the rest of the departmental partners to develop those language lines so that people could have better access to 3-1-1. Another part of the work that came out of that is the Evictions Report, which I think most councilmembers are aware of. And in that Evictions Report, another, I won't say ton of work came out of it, but we ended up working with a lot of partners regionally, the state, public housing, Henniman County, Housing Link, and Home Line, a bunch of partners around, a bunch of partners who are interested in keeping people in their homes. But that Evictions Report prompted it, and we even had Congressman Ellison call us out for two, I won't call them town hall meetings, but that's the only thing that comes to mind right now, is town hall meetings to address evictions, because he read our report and it prompted him to call us and bring other regional partners to the table and have public discussion about it. We also had our... We developed a landlord tenant training for Reg Services. And, goodness, I should have wore that glasses, I can see it better over here. We developed a landlord tenant training, education programming that promotes best practices for landlords. We wanted to make sure that, in working with Director Shuckman, one of the concerns that we wanted to address was really making sure that landlords understood what Reg Services wanted as far as codes and things like that. But we also wanted to make sure that the relationships between landlords and property owners and renters went well, so that we could keep people in their homes. And the Reg Services Director didn't want to appear to be favoring renters, he didn't want to appear to favor property owners, but just wanted to make sure that the relationships were smooth and that we could keep people in quality housing with as little problems as possible. And then, we also did a pilot program with our tiered licensing program to expedite the process. So, we opened up some spots to take and gave people an opportunity to go from tier two to tier one. There's usually a certain amount of time between those inspections where you're actually able to move from tier two to tier one, but what we did was offered property owners an opportunity to move from tier one to tier two in a quicker amount of time. And as you can see, we actually had... So, we offered 100 spots, which initially we thought would be too many, but people like jumped at the opportunity to move up, which we didn't think would happen. Again, it was something that we were testing. We had to move it up to 150 spots. Over 80% of those participating were located in North Minneapolis. You know, the 79 eligible properties, 59 properties had moved from tier one from tier two within a two-month period. And we've been having conversations with Director Shuckman to actually figure out a way to institutionalize the program, if not do it quarterly and things like that. But they've been a really good partner to work with and have always looked to the Innovation Team and worked with us to actually solve for some of the other issues that they have in their department as well that may not have been huge initiatives or priority areas. But if, as we do our work, we find out that one thing leads to another, we uncover things, we work on them, and they've been great partners in having us in their department to help them provide better services to residents in Minneapolis. And the same goes for CPED and civil rights and others. Another example, make sure I'm getting this right. I already talked about the reducing eviction, so I won't repeat that. Another one is our Equitable Business Development Challenge. It was actually...
There's a question from Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Smith, I just wanted to ask about the previous slide. In the last solution, it mentions a partnership between Behavioral Insights Team and MPHA. Can you talk more about the Behavioral Insights Team and what that looks like fit in with the IT work?
So, the Behavioral Insights Team is not us. I'm sorry. Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Cunningham. The Behavioral Insights Team is a team that the Bloomberg philanthropies offered to us as a technical assistance resource and said, "If you need them for anything, let us know." And so, what happened was we were working with, through our evictions work, we were working with MPHA because they have more units than anybody and therefore evict more people, not proportionately, but evict more people. And so, they were willing to work with us as one of the partners that came together at this work to say, "Is there anything we can do to have our residents respond differently so that we don't end up in this process of evicting them? Like, what is it about how we communicate with them? What is the letter saying, you know, that we send to them?" And so, they actually, after a little bit of, you know, prodding, decided that it would be a good idea to continue their work with us, but used the bid team to look at their process and the letter that they send out to residents to see if they could get better responses and not end up going through the evictions process with so many residents. And they took that work on, they're in the process of doing it now, and they report that work back to our program manager, who's in charge of all of our housing work, and it's Jonathan Williams, Council. And so, if you wanted more details about where that actually is to date, we can get that for you later, but I didn't have it as part of it.
Yeah, no, that just caught my eye because I know that cities around the country, here and there, more progressive cities at least, are bringing on Behavioral Insights Teams. As somebody who is familiar with the connection between human behavior and public policy, they really helped to bridge that. So, I'm excited to see that that resource is available to us as a study. Thank you.
Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note, I know you mentioned, Mr. Smith, a couple of examples of policy change that came out of the eviction study, but I just wanted to highlight the ways that this is continuing to inform a lot of policy work going forward. I know Regulatory Services is continuing to look at the tiered system and talking with some of the landlords that, you know, advise the city on how we might continue to evolve that to incentivize more good behavior and maybe even have deeper penalties for the kind of behavior we don't want to see, particularly having a large percentage of units evicted every year. It's informing the work that Councilmember Ellison and I are doing on renter protections. I think it's helping with Councilmember Cunningham's work on conduct on premises. So, I just, I think the work is continuing to live on and that this study was really the impetus for a lot of policy change that is still yet to come.
Did I say thank you out loud? Thank you. And we're still involved with about three-quarters of that work to date. Our Equitable Business Challenge is another... So, this is another example of how we get this big issue. So, people say, "Well, we have a challenge with small businesses, minority immigrant businesses, and how they operate in the city, what they do and don't get, navigating our systems, things like that." So, we had this big challenge of Equitable Business Development Challenge. That work was broken down, when we went through our process, into four buckets, and that is city process, there was also affordable commercial space, access to capital, and then, one of the other things that we did in that work was work and did an evaluation of our city's BTAP program, our Business Technical Assistance Program, which we can provide you with that as well. And so, out of those four buckets of work, which we have more detail on in a full report that you guys will have, the one thing that I wanted to pull out of that was the business portal. Once again, we talked about this with the Enterprise Committee, but it's important to note that we created a centralized information and resource for small business owners that also clarifies the regulatory process. And so, after going through our rigorous process of finding out what the city actually had control over under those four buckets and developing programs, what we did was create the business portal. And so, now, small businesses who did not have the ability to send a person down and go through all the process for them because they have the money, a lot of people that we deal with, again, they're the accountant, they're the cook, they're the waiter, they're, you know, they're everything to their businesses, and our small businesses, particularly minority immigrant businesses. We wanted to create a process by which they could actually do most of that online and just have to come to the city for transactional purposes. And then, and we did that. And then, and we did that. We use our solutions, I mean, the, the process that we go through to do our work to get there. And the business portal has been a success thus far. And we also measure what people come to the site for, how often they come, and we can provide you with that information as well. And then we also had the small business team who backs that up so that if people just don't want to be online and want to talk to somebody, they can do that. And I think we might even have a few people in the audience today who've experienced it. And they speak to it quite often with us. Another bucket of work that it's come out of, one of the things that we're trying to solve for is one of those buckets of work that came out of the Equitable Business Development is addressing the capital gaps for entrepreneurs of color. We have, we have great technical assistance programs at the city. We have great loan programs at the city. But in our work, what we found through our research is that the minority and immigrant businesses that we engage and aspiring entrepreneurs, they just don't have access to capital like other people would have access to capital. So a lot of the white-owned businesses that we engage and talk to and through our research, we know they can go to a parent for a loan, they can go to an uncle for a loan to get, to get their business started. But minority businesses, immigrant businesses, they have to count on lenders to get money. And so whether that's a traditional bank, whether that's CDFIs or other institutions, that's where they have to go. And they don't have, and those institutions have traditionally left minority and immigrant businesses out for a variety of reasons that I don't think I have to go into today, but what we wanted to do was create a pathway so that those businesses could then take advantage of the CDFIs, the regular lending institutions and city programs. So what we are in the process of developing with the help of CPED is a revolving loan fund, where CPED has given us the initial seed money to start the revolving loan fund and we're working with philanthropy and other banks to build a revolving loan fund that will give businesses the opportunity to come and get a loan at a low interest rate, but then they can also leverage the 2% loan at the city, other loans from other banks. Because currently, CDFIs and other institutions use the same lending criteria as traditional banks because that's where they borrow their money from. And so if we can come in, so the 2% loan says, I need 100 grand. I can't access the 2% loan because I have to get the first 50% from a traditional lender. Traditional lenders use same criteria. I mean, they're just locking these folks out. So what we want to do is say, well, we will be able to create a revolving loan fund, which you can get the first part of it. Now you can leverage the 2% loan. And with a blended loan, if we're not get, if we're giving our money out at, say, 6%, 7% with a blended loan of 2% from the city, it makes it affordable, it opens up avenues to people that they've never had before. And so that's one of the things that we're working on now. Myself, folks from CPED Network is being led by Jim Terrell. And we are, what I can give you as far as details about where we have with that is we're in stage two of three stages where we're asking a national organization for three to five million dollars to start this revolving loan fund. And we've also had Sunrise Banks, who agreed to do all of the processing for us at no fee. We've also had Lisk, who are willing to be the fiscal agent at a minimal fee. And so we've wrapped up all the partners and we know who's going to work with us, who's going to help us make these funds available. It's just getting through the process for the larger amount of money. And that partner, which is no secret, is Living Cities. Living Cities, yes.
What criteria are you proposing, are you guys proposing to use then for access and capital?
I will bring my banker here if he's here, if that's okay, Chair Jenkins.
Yes, if they can answer that question.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, thank you. My name is Jim Terrell. I'm with the Business Development Division of CPED. And as Brian indicated, I've been working for quite a number of months with him and his team on the revolving loan fund. You may know, or some may know, that initially we looked at EDA money as, as the seed money for this, a long process with the Economic Development Administration. What we found through that process is that there were more strings on that money and it took longer, far longer. And so our effort with Living Cities should result in a more flexible fund. What kinds of terms? Brian, Mr. Smith mentioned lower than market interest rate, probably longer amortization, more relaxed view of the necessary collateral. And so we would be able to make loans available to entrepreneurs that simply wouldn't qualify, as Brian indicated, for that first portion of the financing from our matching partners under the 2% loan program. That very much is traditional lending analysis, collateral, credit, capacity, conditions. And then the city's loan program puts in the second 50% of a loan request. So here's accurate, $100,000 loan request, $50,000 from a bank at market rate, $50,000 from the city at 2%. If the revolving loan fund is able to be funded at the degree that we'd like, it could do that first 50. The city's 2% program could match with it. We'd have a much lower rate, we'd have more relaxed requirements for collateral, more relaxed requirements for credit. We might be able to make loans at a smaller dollar amount. And so those are some of the logistics that are being worked out in that final phase of what has to be presented to Living Cities to access that fund or to qualify for the grant or loan from them.
When, when do you guys anticipate this program being available?
We anticipate making submissions to Living Cities in the month of June and then it's subject to their process in terms of approval. We anticipate using a participation model where we would be able to buy the loan servicing from outside partners so that we don't need a big infrastructure within the city enterprise to be able to service the loans. We are already having our 2% loans, for example, serviced by our lending partners. And so all aspects of it are such that if the funding is approved by Living Cities, we should be in a position to be making loans by Q3 or Q4 of this year.
And so when you say our partners will service the loans, partners like?
We have, well.
CDFIs or?
Yes. Madam Chair, we have partnerships with MCCD and with other organizations that service the loans, but we have partners with a number of banks that actually service the loans when we do 2% loans. Again, if a borrower goes to one of our banking partners, applies for the loan, is approved, we buy a portion of the loan at the backend at the 2%. That borrower makes the payment to that bank.
To Wells Fargo or?
Sunrise. Venture Bank. We don't currently have a partnership with Wells Fargo, but we are calling on them actively to reestablish one. So we end up being able to do this work without having to do all of the back office, the documentation of the collateral, the collection of the payments and those types of things. So it works out well through what we call the participation loan programs.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from folks?
So the next part of our presentation will be a clear example of the step-by-step process that we've used when called by a city department to work with them to solve an important issue in the city. And so right now you're going to get a presentation from our human centered design expert, Elliot Payne. We'll talk about the work we're doing with Civil Rights and Public Works. And that work was also meant to serve as a model for how, if, if we could have civil rights and public works, if we could work this issue out with them, then it would solve as a model for the rest of the enterprise and doing work cross-departmentally. So.
Hello, Councilmember Terrell and councilmembers. So we wanted to walk through this project because it's a really great example of, everything you've seen today is basically a description of our process. We wanted to actually show what that process looks like rather than just the end state. So the context here is that Civil Rights and Public Works manage a lot of the contracts that come through the city and it's managed through the SUBP program. And like, like Brian said, we want to focus on outcomes and our outcome is that we want more contract opportunities for minority and immigrant businesses. And so as we looked at that overall procurement process and what civil rights role was in it, we were able to map out end-to-end how that process works, what are the steps, what are the levels of accountability? And Civil Rights approached us to say, hey, you know, we do a lot of these projects, they're really complicated. There's some communication and collaboration issues that we think we could improve on. Can you, can you collaborate with us and take a look at this process? So that was our starting point. Again, somewhat big. It's still a few steps down within those iterations for us to get to that specific type of procurement within the city, coming from that larger effort around business development. And so we facilitated a number of workshops between Civil Rights and Public Works to dig into the issues and to get a deeper understanding. So what we learned is, you know, there's upwards of 100 projects that are managed by civil rights. You kind of have a small handful of compliance officers. And they're working with a lot of project managers throughout the entire enterprise. But we looked at public work specifically to understand, you know, what's happening in each one of those interactions. And through that process, we learned that there's a lot of kind of accountability gaps because there's just a lot of touch points in that procurement process and the SUBP part of that procurement process, it's actually only one small sliver of the overall procurement process. And so what we needed to do is start kind of identifying themes and areas of focus that we should look into because, again, we don't have all of the resources in the world, so we need to focus our energy on the areas that we think we can have the biggest impact so that we can narrow it down into a project that's of a reasonable size. And so these are the five focus areas that we highlighted, highlighted through our primary research. Again, broadly, communication and collaboration, but also just the ongoing compliance management, once a contract is awarded, where are the accountabilities as that contract is managed? The goal-setting process at the beginning. The good faith standards and processes, we looked at that as well. And then vendor development, so there can be issues where there may not be a minority or woman-owned business within a certain category of work that needs to happen. And so those are all areas that we could spend time coming up with ideas. But, you know, that would be putting the cart before the horse because we don't know what the core issue is. And so one of the methods that we use is process mapping or journey mapping to get a visualization of that end-to-end procurement process. Look at all the different parties that are involved. What are those decision points? What are those accountability points? And it lays that groundwork so us, for us to actually zoom in and on an area that we could actually develop some scope around to come up with some ideas that we could actually make a difference. And so we, one of the things that we believe in is co-creation. I'm not a procurement expert for a civil rights compliance process on my own. That expertise needs to be brought into the room, not only from civil rights, but also from public works and also from procurement so that we can get a holistic view of that journey and start highlighting some of the areas that there might be a big gap in the process where we could actually do something. And so this is a picture from one of those working sessions where we started highlighting some of the specifics and zooming in specifically around the goal-setting step in that process and kind of red-flagging that as, hey, this is an area of opportunity where not only is it a gap in the process, but we think we could actually make a difference with the skills and resources that we have on staff. And so one of the ways that we approach this kind of problem-solving approach is framing the work. And we frame our work using a challenge statement. And so this, this allows us to concisely say what the problem is and start giving direction to a solution without necessarily saying we're going to start designing right now. So this is kind of a opener for us to start the creative process of coming up with ideas to solve these challenges. And so in the case of this work, again, this process is really large. We wanted to zoom in on one area and that was the goal-setting process. And some of the things that we noted was that, you know, when you're a contract compliance officer, your background isn't in construction, your background isn't in engineering. And when you're a project manager, your background isn't in, you know, NICS codes and affirmative action plans necessarily. And so we need to bridge that gap of, of understanding between these two different parties that have deep knowledge, but knowledge that isn't easy to translate. And so one of the ways that we did that is we wanted to quickly prototype out a way for somebody to sit down and put in scopes of work with some values and let a system automatically calculate that. Because right now, like I said, I think we have in a handful of contract compliance officers managing 100-plus jobs. It's a manual process where a project manager has to enter all their lines of scope into a spreadsheet that gets sent over to Civil Rights. They have to manually go in and do calculations so that we're making sure that we're setting accurate goals. And in a lot of cases, a project manager may not know what the right category they should assign to some work. And they may assign work that, there could be a ton of minority-owned businesses in one category, but they assign it to a different category that sounds similar. And so that goal might get set to zero if there's not enough vendors within that category. So we wanted to prototype, what if you had a tool that had some error correction that had a little bit of intelligence to say, hey, we know that there are actual businesses in this category that you could assign to this work to set that goal so that we could get that money out into the community? What if a system could guide you towards that if you didn't have that knowledge prior? And so this is a reflection of how we approach the work. This isn't a real tool, this is a mock-up. But it allowed us to get it in front of the contract compliance officers and get it in front of project managers and make sure that, you know, does this approach make sense? Would this be useful to you? And we were able to iterate on this and improve this based on that feedback. And so that's another one of the highlights of our process. We don't just go at it with a solution because we think we know best. We try to understand the root causes, where are the areas of leverage, zoom in on that, prototype out a solution, invite people to the table to make sure that that solution is delivering on those expected outcomes. And so we wanted to share this example because it goes all the way from kind of a, almost vague. You know, we, we could use some, you know, continuous improvement in this process to something very concrete that we could actually build and deliver this as a tool for the enterprise. Any questions in that?
Councilmember Jenkins and committee members. So in closing, just wanted to share a couple of things with you guys and that is the innovation team, with all the skill set that I think the team brings, we're only as good as the departments that we work with allow us to be. And so the work that we've gotten done, I don't want to go through a list of names, the folks know who they are, but we would not have been able to get any of that work done if it were not for their full cooperation in helping us get there. And the other part that should not be missed is that they also allow for something that we think is important and I feel that they do too. And that is, we can only be as good as they allow us to be. And the community members and stakeholders that we work with on the outside of the city, they bring a perspective and it's been a part of everything that we've developed, whether that's help with policies, practices, an actual tool that we've created, that their voice is at the center of it because that's who we're developing it for. And everybody that we've been working with in the city across the departments have either realized that before we got there or they've come to realize it and they allow that to be a part of the process so that we can do our work. And so I'm grateful for that. And then lastly, say, who are the folks that are doing this work with them, who are they? Excuse the picture, I'm just speaking on my own. It's myself, currently there's myself and Nick Campbell, Jonathan Elliott. And then you have two people who were a big part of our team and a part of all the work that we talked about today. And there's also an appendix that will even highlight more work that we've done. We had to limit it because of time here, but Zo, who's on maternity leave and Tony were also a part of all the work that was talked about here today and that you'll find in the appendix that will be emailed to each of you. And currently, yeah, so that's who's doing the work now. We have two members who are no longer with the team. Their skills and services were needed elsewhere and they were integrated into the enterprise to do. Zo's doing the small business teamwork. Tony has moved on to a different admin position team within the city and in the coordinator's office. And then everybody else is paid for on grant funding, which actually ends, it was technically supposed to end at the end of 2017. I'm frugal and so I was able to save a few dollars to keep people around. And so, but at the end of 2018, which we had a no cost extension with carryover funds. The only person that will actually be paid for on the innovation team out of the general fund would be myself. So I think that's important. Note, I cannot do all of this by myself. There is an I in innovation, but I'm not it. So with that said, if there are no more questions, I am done here.
Are there any questions from my colleagues at all? See, Nan, I guess I have a couple of questions. So I guess from your perspective, what can the innovation team or what does the innovation team need to, to continue to move its work forward? Beyond what you just mentioned about resources?
Beyond that, I think it's beyond resources. I think it's important to, for leadership within the enterprise to come to a clear understanding that they can share with the rest of the enterprise about what the innovation team is, what it can do for you, what your expectations are of the innovation team. And I think once that's clear and once everybody understands as an enterprise, the value of an innovation team and how everybody can utilize it, I think we'd be used more. I think we can get more out of it because as currently structured, we, we have the capacity to do more. But I don't want to take on more without being able to fulfill those promises that we might make now. And then 2019 comes around and we made the promise and it's just me.
Okay. Mr. Payne talked a lot about the, the civil rights work and the S U B P program. How, how does that interact with supplier diversity?
It's a component of supplier diversity. That program only is a portion of the total discretionary spend. And, but it's a program that we have in place that has an entire framework around it. And the way that we're approaching it is supplier diversity can be broken down into what can we proactively do differently to increase our spend? What are we doing currently with the goals of increasing spend? And there's a really small distinction between those two. The focus of the supplier, or the SUBP program engaging with public works and civil rights was, let's look at our existing programs and let's make sure that they're working as efficiently as possible to deliver on the outcomes that they were designed to deliver against. But we're also working in parallel on supplier diversity initiatives that would engage us in a different way. So that the city would have to operate in a different way so that we can open up more opportunities and possibly create even new programs.
Okay, thank you. And I did hear from our city coordinator that, that we will be getting update on supplier diversity at the enterprise committee soon. So we'll be looking forward to that. And then how does Target Market work intersect with your office, if at all? The Target Market Program?
Chair Jenkins, committee members. When Target, Target Market was in the works before the innovation team were hitting the ground running real good. So this grew out of work that happened prior to our arrival. The way we were asked to engage with Target Market Program was number one, around helping the Target Market Program and the staff and everybody involved with that, set metrics for the program. So what would we measure to determine if this was successful or not? So the innovation team was used for that. And we will also use for engagement and outreach of the program. So because of the relationships that we had developed around the work that we've been doing, could we get this information into the hands of, you know, minority and immigrant business owners and vendors so that they could be a part of the Target Market Program? Could we work with folks in procurement around the Target Market Program to do targeted outreach to women vendors, to minority vendors, to, you know, African American community, Latino community, people who do specific trades even. So we were asked to bring our experience and our knowledge around those things to help get that information about TMP into those folks' hands. So that although it wasn't designed as a targeted program for say African Americans or women, anything like that, but we wanted to bring as many people as we can from those other demographics into the program. So that when people did get a list of TMP vendors, they would see way more of those minority and women contractors than they had previously.
Are, is your team working to really try to target these programs to, and these resources to some of the underserved women and people of color owned businesses? I know that when we heard the report from the Target Market Program, that it, it was beneficial to a broad number of people, but not necessarily some of the communities that are really struggling and sort of historically left behind in, in city spending.
Chair Jenkins, committee members. Again, the Target Market Program was designed to be race and gender neutral. And then after looking at, after setting the metrics and look, getting some of the numbers back, it is not having, I mean, it's race and gender neutral, but it's even with adding more people into it, even more people of color into that program, we're still not seeing the numbers of minority and women vendors go up significantly. And so with the direction of our city coordinator and working with procurement, the innovation team, civil rights, the results team, which is now strategic planning and analysis. We have begun the process of saying what we actually can do to, and to use your words, to make a target, target market program. And so ways to overlay race and gender, I mean, race as a priority, gender and all the other things that we need to look at, where we know we've not traditionally spent our dollars in the city. And I know there are some things that are, that have to be run by our city attorney's office around what we can do around targeted programs. And I think our disparity study is one of the things that is, we're looking at closely to make sure if, if the disparity study justifies us doing the targeted programs for women, targeted programs for minorities and things like that, then we'll move forward. And in the process of waiting, I know the teams are constantly figuring out ways that we can have a system that's ready to meet that need if and when we get to a place to make that target, target market program. So we're continuing to work. It's just some things, I'm not a lawyer, so we just got to wait for a few words back from city attorney's office about what we are allowed to do and aren't allowed to do, and then we'll be moving forward. But again, a more thorough report on those things will be coming later. I can't remember which committee it's supposed to report back to, but it's coming. It's the joint with the two chairs here. Chair Pomison, Chair Jenkins, so it should be coming up soon.
Thank you. And you know, I do want to say thank you to you and your team for, for this presentation today. But more importantly, for the work that you have all been doing to help us move our city forward and, and really try to address some of the structural inequities in, in our system. And I think we have another comment from, or question from council president Bender.
Thank you, ma'am chair, I'll be brief, but I, you know, I wanted to reflect on the fact that since I've been in office over the years, I've seen an increased interest from the council in doing policy work or sort of outcome driven change approaches to work. And so I think that we need to continue to think about how we've structured staff within the city's departments to accomplish that. One example that I talk about a lot is that in the public works department, early in last term, council member Reich worked with the council to restructure the staff in that department to create a new transportation planning division that enabled us to adopt the complete streets policy and then now to help target our infrastructure investments toward goals related to race equity. And had we not made that staffing change, I think that work would have been a lot more challenging. And so I think again, overall as a city, it's important for us to be reflective about how much more work we're asking staff to be doing overall. And also acknowledge that when we're pushing departments to do policy change, we need to make sure that they're the right staff resources in place to do that. And I mention that because I think there's going to be a question to ask about, should this kind of work be in its own separate team? That's kind of an internal consultant or should it be in some department somewhere? Or should we create it in multiple departments? I just want to name that, right? And because it's an important decision coming up. And just say that from my perspective, the ability of this team of staff to work across the different departments and divisions within the city and to be nimble and to work on multiple big policy questions at the same time has been very valuable. And I've seen the value of that. I think the way that community engagement is happening here is different than how it's being done in a lot of other places within the city. So just for example, asking more open ended questions of stakeholders. You know, we often convene small businesses when we're going to raise the minimum wage. And this is a different process that says, hey, small businesses, we want to talk with you about open ended questions about what's going to make it better to do business in the city of Minneapolis. And just having that staff availability to do that kind of open ended work, I think has been a part of this that's been very valuable. So that's a big, long comment, but I just also wanted to ask kind of what's on the horizon for the team? And what are the big next things that you're working on now? And then I think it's up to all of us to think about what we would want to focus the work on in the future too.
Chair Jenkins, president Bender, committee. Thank you for the comment first of all. And then what we're like, our small business development work seems to be never ending. And so that work is continuing. It seems that every time we get into something with housing and think we've arrived somewhere, another thing happens there. So I know we've been asked by the mayor's office, but not with a specific direction yet to be ready to engage and help with that process of the housing that's going on. The housing priority that the mayor has and that the city has. We also are in the process, like as a, another tentacle coming out of the small business work is, is the supply of diversity work. And we've been in a few roundtables, I mean, uh, study sessions where you guys have heard me speak about some of the needs and I can't remember the quote, but I will find it. And that is, which is about the work that we have to do. And that is, so when we look at the disparity study, everybody's aware of what the numbers say, but we know that the city is not fully utilizing its purchasing power to provide market opportunities that can anchor the growth and success of women and minority owned businesses. That is a priority of the innovation team. It seems to be a priority of the city. And because of the experience that we've had with engaging inspiring entrepreneurs, current entrepreneurs, large, small and in between, and working on these policy issues and with the departments that are charged with this work, we think we're uniquely positioned to play a significant role in that work and have been. And so we know that that's ongoing and we'll be a part of that. And the other part of the work that I think we'll end up doing as we move forward is I have been approached and had a few conversations with deputy chief Art Knight around some public safety and community relationship work that they want to possibly entertain with us leading some of that. And so that's not really fleshed out yet. And public, public safety was a topic that I literally fretted working on because of, you know, recent history and things like that. But I think we have a chief and deputy chief and, and police officers who are really willing and ready to tackle some tough issues. And they just want to make sure that they can do it with folks who have, as council member Bender said, a different type of dynamic and a different type of relationship with people in the city. And I think that just speaks to the fact that when we do our work, when government does its work, it usually goes out to the community and asks for buy-in. We're not selling anything, so we never ask for buy-in. We just go out and ask people to co-create with us so that whatever we come up with, they have just as much ownership and just as much stake in it as anybody that comes here with a badge on it that says city hall. And so I think that's what I think is pretty unique about the way we approach it. And so those are the things that we'll be looking forward to do in the future. And then anything else that the mayor's office or council or my boss, if she's still here, tasks us with.
Thank you. And I know you mentioned that you invited a couple of business owners down. And while we don't necessarily have time to hear from them, I would hope that you could introduce them and, and maybe identify the businesses.
It's been a while, so I don't know who was here and who left. I had my back turned, councilmember Jenkins. But we have Tommy from Pimento and then Corinne. And just tell the folks who you are and who you represent.
Hi, I'm with Major Alliance.
Well, maybe, maybe they can come up to the microphone and just introduce themselves.
They represent a host of businesses, so.
I'm with Major Alliance, I'm not really going to share a whole lot, but I think we've been really impressed with the work that Innovation Team has done. And we've been really impressed with the research that you've put out. And Tommy was on the innovation team, you want to talk about your work?
Oh, sure. Thank you for having me. I'm Tommy Beavis with Pimento Jamaican Kitchen. We've had the pleasure of, well, let's start off by going way back to when I am trying to figure out how to start our Jamaican restaurant with zero restaurant experience in the city of Minneapolis. One person gives you a paper, have you signed it, walk over to their hand and they bring it back two weeks later. Long story short, it was quite painful. But thanks to the innovation team as well as the, the business team, what they were able to do is offer us the same resources that larger companies were able to have, which includes bringing together the respective, the leaders from, with the respective departments to try to figure out how can we better, do a better job of, of processing applications for simple things like adding one seat to a restaurant. And so we've been relying on, 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 on both the innovation team as well as the business teams to help us grow. And they've been doing a tremendous job. So anything you can do to support them? So anything you can do to support them, we support that, of course, because a vote for it to support them is a vote to support the small businesses. Vote to support them is to help grow and broaden the, the economic base by bringing in more entrepreneurs of color, women, and of course, immigrant entrepreneurs. So we wholeheartedly support them and encourage you to do the same, but also challenge them to even be more innovative. Challenge them to make sure that we are going to be the most innovative city in the city. Just say it. And, and so, and so let, let us push, 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 push it on, up even farther and try to figure out what we can do to make it a better place for all businesses. Thank you.
And one, one last thing. We've been really excited about all the progress that has been made in the city. The small business team had four people and we've been really, Suato's been doing some great work and is now out in the community doing community office hours for small businesses. We were impressed by the, the business portal. It's a great resource for small businesses. We feel like it should have been in place a long time ago, but it's, it is really great. And we really are excited also about the revolving loan funds. And there's a lot of things that Brian and his team have been thinking about that they, you kind of didn't talk about all of the ideas, but the innovation team has a ton of ideas of the way, of ways that the city can support small businesses and local procurement, promotion of locally owned businesses. I think Nick was the one who told me about Portland has a map of all small businesses throughout the city that you can search for by neighborhood, by minority owned business status, by industry. And things like that are really cool. And it would be great if the city could have those kind of like resources to support those kinds of things for small businesses. So we look forward to continuing to work with you all. Thanks.
Wow. Well, thank you both. And I would encourage my colleagues to visit Pimento, one of the latest, latest additions to Eat Street along Nicollet Avenue, authentic Jamaican food. It's amazing. And did you have any other closing comments?
Chair Jenkins, if you get a chance, go through the appendix. That's in the larger presentation that you'll have emailed to you. I know we only had a limited amount of time, and so I did not want to stand here and give a two and a half year presentation at your, at your meeting. And so the detailed things like Corinne we're talking about and some of the things that Tommy mentioned are in the appendix about ideas that were, that have come out of our work, things that we're still working on with other city departments here. It's just that I didn't have time or to, to go through all of them, so.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you so much. And with that, I move to receive and file these presentations. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That item carries. That concludes the business of the Race Equity Subcommittee, and that meeting is now adjourned. And before we move to the report of the, the committee reports, I will ask Chair Palmasano to conclude the business of the Enterprise Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it's important and it fits into all of our efforts to have this conversation together. So with my enterprise hat on, I just want to thank our city coordinator, Nuria Rivera Vandermeide and Brian and his team to, to help to air all of this out publicly, to share all of the work that you've been doing. So thank you. I would also move to receive and file the presentation. All those in favor, please say aye on the committee, on the Enterprise Committee, that is. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And that, and now I will adjourn that meeting and turn it over back to you. Thanks.
Oh, and we have one remaining item on our committee of the whole agenda, and that is the receipt of the reports from the standing committees on matters to be considered by the full council. At our regular meeting this Friday, we will begin with the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. Chair Goodman is not here. And so we will get that report from the vice chair, council member Ellison.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee has 14 items to report, actually 13, because I would like to move to remove item 11, which was a revocation for a mobile food vehicle. But that issue has been resolved. So I'm going to move to remove item 11 from the report. Item one is a on sale liquor license for Papal Vu Restaurant. Item two is on sale wine and beer license for first draft taproom and kitchen. Item three is a sidewalk cafe license for fairgrounds, coffee and tea. Item four is on sale liquor license for Edward's Dessert Kitchen. Item five is on sale liquor taproom license for Ladonia, which is a cerveceria. Item number six is on sale wine and beer license for The Regime, location in North Minneapolis. Item number seven is an off sale liquor license for Henry &amp; Sons. Item number eight is on sale wine and beer license for The Gray Fox. Item number nine is a sidewalk cafe license for Botany Coffee. Item 10 is the passage of a resolution approving the 44th and Penn Avenue North redevelopment plan. Item number 11 is stricken. Item 12 is the regular liquor business and gambling licenses. The approval of those. Item number 13 is a licensed settlement conference involving Pizza Luce. And item 14 is a, the approval, the reinstatement of a rental dwelling license. And I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ellison. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we will receive the Housing Policy and Development Committee report from the vice chair, council member Ellison.
That's like my day. Okay, so the Housing Policy and Development Committee has six items to report. Item number one is a land sale of 2,818th Avenue North. Item number two is also a land sale at 1405 16th Avenue North. Item number three is a supplemental award and bond issuance for Hook and Ladder Apartments Project at 2318 Jefferson Street Northeast and 640 24th Avenue Northeast. Item number four is the report for Heading Home Together, Minnesota's 2018 to 2020 Action Plan to Prevent and End Homelessness. Item number five is applications for grant funding for the 2018 Metropolitan Council Livable Communities Demonstration Account and Livable Communities Demonstration Account Transit Oriented Development Grants. And item number six is establishing a Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Housing. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ellison. Are there any questions? Seeing none, next we will hear from the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee. And that report will be given by council member Gordon, Vice Chair Gordon.
Thank you very much. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee is bringing forward seven items. The first one is reapportment of Commissioner of Health, Dr. Musikant. Second is passage of an ordinance. Many are code to add provisions to increase the minimum age for sale or provision of tobacco products from 18 to 21. The third is a resolution recognizing May 20th, 2018 as the day of transgender, of the transgender child in the city of Minneapolis. The fourth item is approving appointees to the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Aging and some reapportments. Fifth item is approving reapportment to the Public Health Advisory Committee. Sixth item is accepting a grant from the Minneapolis Foundation Environmental Legacy Fund for Minneapolis Solar Energy Green Business Initiative. And the last item is we received a report from the Neighborhood's 2020 Work Group and approved the work group structure and changed it slightly. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gordon. Are there any questions? Seeing none, next we will hear from the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee. And that report will be given by the vice chair, council member Fletcher.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. The Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee brings forward five items this week. The first is a gift acceptance from Kelly Doran to supply Narcan for Minneapolis 911 Response Officers. The second is a memorandum of understanding with Summit Academy regarding cooperation in addressing campus sexual assaults. The third is a contract with the University of Minnesota Veterinary Medical Center for Police Canine Health Services. The fourth is a contract amendment with SMG to correct the hourly rate for 911 dispatchers. And the fifth is a contract amendment with Hennepin County regarding the Hennepin County Jail encouraging provision to promote a separation between local law enforcement and federal immigration enforcement. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, council member Fletcher. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we will now hear from the Transportation and Public Works Committee, Chair by council member Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee forwarding 15 items for consideration. Items one, two, and three are projects that will be subject to public hearing with the amounts listed. Item four is a joint powers agreement for the city of Columbia Heights for a street that's shared with that municipality for improvements as listed. Item five is a contract amendment. Actually, five, six, and seven are all contract amendments to continue work of, of the department. Item eight is a grant from the state of Minnesota for the renovation of PV Plaza. Item nine is the sewer service line repair assessment cancellation for the address listed. Item 10 is the railroad agreement with the Minnesota Commercial Railroad for the Mid-City Industrial Reconstruction Project. Item 11 is the D-line bus rapid transit recommendation station plan. Item 12 is the bid for the 14th Avenue South sanitary replacement project. 13 is the 2018 Minneapolis squad car upfitting kits. And 14 is the Public Works Week. We had a nice resolution supporting our employees of the Public Works Department. And item 15 is the pedestrian and bicycle winter maintenance study. That was a receive and file, very impressive report. Recommend my colleagues review it. Stand for questions, Madam Vice President.
Are there any questions? Thank you, council member Reich. Seeing none, we will now hear from the Ways and Means Committee, Chair by council member Orsami.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Ways and Means Committee has 10 items to report to the full council. The first item is civil service commission appointments. There are two appointments, approving the reapportment by executive committee of Christine Seward, seat two, for a three year term beginning March 1st, 2018, and ending February 28th, 2021. And the second is approving the reapportment by the executive committee of Macy Wheeler, seat number three, for a three year term beginning March 1st, 2017, and ending February 28th, 2020. The second is a legal settlement between Andre Agui and the city of Minneapolis. The third is a contract with Cornerstone Advocacy Services to provide dedicated advocacy work for victims of domestic violence. Number four is a contract amendment with Messenger Construction Company, Inc. for contract closeout. Fifth is a contract amendment with Outreach Sign Company for a contract closeout. Sixth item is a one time funds transfer from the city coordinator's office to the Community Planning and Economic Development Department for an energy technical assistance program. Number seven is an energy and regulatory policy staff position grant application. Number eight is a contract amendment with Industrial Hygiene Services Corporation for general hygiene and testing services. Number nine is a contract with Professional Service Industries, Inc. for vibration monitoring services for the public service building project. And number 10 is an amendment to, to the joint powers agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Bureau of Criminal Apprehension for Participation of the State's Human Trafficking Task Force. And I, this is, that's our full report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Orsami. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we will hear from the Zoning and Planning Committee, Chair by council member Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The zoning and planning committee has five items that we'll be bringing forward on Friday. The first is the granting of a variance appeal submitted for the address 1800 Fourth Street Northeast. The second is the denial of an appeal for the property at 3612 through 3616 Bryant Avenue South. The third is also a denial of an appeal for the property at 3100 West River Parkway. The fourth is the granting of an appeal for a conditional use permit for the same property at 3100 West River Parkway. I'd also like to inform the committee that Commissioner, excuse me, council member Gordon will likely have an amendment to bring forward on Friday regarding that. And number five is the granting of a vacation resolution correction for Minneapolis Public Schools for their property at 2526 Emerson Avenue South. Thank you, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chair Schrader. Are there any questions? We have a question from council member Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's not a question on that. It's actually a post zoning and planning committee comment. Is that okay if I make that now?
I believe it is in order.
Thank you. I wanted to note that we had our intergovernmental relations committee scheduled for 2:30, and we will have a five minute recess after this committee ends to get prepared for that. And I would encourage my colleagues who aren't on the committee to stick around as well to get a legislative recap of what happened with the session. Obviously, there's been a lot of headlines about it, and it'll be good to hear the sorted information about what really impacts Minneapolis.
Thank you, council member Johnson. And I was also going to just thank Mr. Renee and his staff for his, for your patience this afternoon. And we look forward to hearing your report. There will be a five minute resource recess, and that completes our business for this afternoon. With no further business before us, we are adjourned.